All right, we'll call a meeting to order here in the Budget Committee meeting. And, uh, I'm going to need to make attendance. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last April 21 meeting? Any corrections or comments?
And that will have to be an action item after-
So we'll have to wait to approve those till later at the end, okay. Save your, uh, how about old business? I don't remember if you had other than attendee reports that, you know, that's a good one.
Yeah, I, there were no requests from the last, um, meeting that I'm aware of, so I think-
Okay. Let's move on to new business then, and those department budgets. It looks like we have, oh, somebody knows.
Not that I know that I'm first. So, the curriculum instruction budget is under, it's listed as support services assistant superintendent. It also has personnel embedded in there, so, um, we'll look at all of that together. I don't know what tab says, sorry.
District, district support?
Maybe?
Yeah, district support tab.
Okay. Did you find yours? Okay, all right, so, um, we will look at just staffing very briefly. No significant changes there, uh, other than you will note, uh, the addition of a new position, uh, just a very small, DO receptionist, two and a half hours per day. That position will help cover just general reception duties to the district office, but in addition, there are some clerical duties that have been increased due to the collaboration grant, which is our $400,000 grant that we've received from ODE. Uh, we've completed year two and we'll be entering year three, and particularly in purchasing and time cards and sub relief. Um, there's been a pretty significant increase in the paperwork coming out of my office, and since I don't have a secretary, um, we're going to tack some of those duties onto, uh, that receptionist as well, so. Nothing else significant that I see there, uh, in staffing, moving down. You will notice that staffing for the school resource officer is not actually embedded in the personnel at the top, that's considered a contracted service. Uh, we, we contract that directly with Silverton PD, so, um, that's listed under student safety. And then you'll notice that next significant change comes under assessment and testing. There's a $22,000 ticket item for computer software, Argos, that's a brand-new software program. Um, and essentially, we are hoping that the purchase, well, we believe that the purchase of that program will decrease the amount of man-hours that it is taking to complete the ODE reports. So, other districts that have purchased this service, it's connected directly to our student information system that we already purchased from LBL. And so it will allow us to pull, automatically pull, um, essential skills reports and ELPA, that's English Language Proficiency Assessment Reports. It will be able to connect state assessment data with STAR assessment data, and combine those reports for students, so we can, can, uh, generate reports for parents with all of that information in one place. In addition, it will automatically track all of our attendance data and our behavior reports, and many of those will be prepared to, uh, go to ODE at the click of a button versus what is right now taking us, in some cases, pretty significant hours to compile all of that data from multiple places. So this is essentially a data warehouse, and because we're purchasing it from the same vendor, we purchase our student information system from LBL, we would purchase Argos from LBL, and that automatically all talks to one another, so. Um, the other districts in LBL's, uh, region that have purchased it have said easily it paid for itself in a reduction of time required for reports, uh, on their staff, so, we're trusting it will do the same for us here as well. Similar line items in the area of staff development, um, student transportation, and, um, you will notice a $4,000 addition for the employee assistance program. We actually added that on to our budget, oh, maybe mid-year we purchased that. The employee assistance program is an opportunity that we can offer through- Dan, I don't want him to speak. We offer it through Moda, through our healthcare provider.
Yeah.
And it offers multiple services to our staff members, including things like financial counseling, personal counseling, debt consolidation, uh, real estate services, all sorts of, um, just assistance programs at a very reduced rate for them. And, uh, again, other districts have, have purchased into the EAP and have found it very beneficial. We've had pretty good use of it just in the remaining last half of the year that we had it on-site this, uh, in 2015, 16, so we intend to continue that offering as a benefit package for our staff.
How do you let the staff know about this?
So, there are brochures that we distribute to everyone, and then we do email access, and then kind of as we hear of things, we, uh, there are, there are business cards and things that we've been able to hand out, particularly as we hear of, "Oh, I'm looking to buy my first home." Well, you know what, before you do that, you should call them. Or if we know families are going through a financial crisis, or marital issues, or grief counseling, uh, there's just kind of a wide array of services, and so, um, in some cases, staff have come to us asking for support, but in many cases, as we hear of things that are occurring in staff's lives, to just be able to say, "You know what, hey, don't forget, we have the support available to you."
Is that the only resource you have available for that sort of service, like for employee-
Um, I would say it's the most comprehensive service that we have to be able to, it would be the first place that we would go. Definitely would be the first place we would direct people. So, um, other questions about anything else on here that looks different?
Any question? Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Board members are aware of this, but Budget Committee members may not be. This is the last Budget Committee meeting for Gary Marshall, he's retiring, effective August 31st. We celebrated him earlier this week with retirement recognition, so, thank you.
Um, before I start, I want to give, uh, recognize Brett Milliken, and he's sitting in the back. For those who do not know, he is the network manager for the district. He does an extremely good job, so when I go, I at least know all of that part's going to work for him. And also, kudos, we have a new Matthew Horton that's over here, he's going to be doing, you'll be seeing him more this next year. Unfortunately, I won't be seeing him. My dis, my budget is pretty much on par with what it was last year. Uh, there's not a, we, uh, we are absorbing in my budget, um, the, uh, the laptop renewal program that we started last year. You'll see that in the, um, middle part there. We, we are leasing laptops for staff every three years, we're renewing that, and we've kept that in as a line item now, so that teachers can always be assured they're going to have a, a tool, the latest tool, instead of the eight-years-old tools that they used to have. And we know that those just don't work for a lot of things, so, it's really nice, and then their, their laptops will go down to the students. So, it's been a very popular, very successful program, so we will, we continue that in my budget. We also have an allocation budget per student, in every school that they, last year they got $25, which is a nice way for us to slowly move technology over to an enterprise, uh, management rather than individual schools, so that each school has that much money. This, this year it's $15 per student, but it can only be spent on technology. So, in times past, a principal might kind of X-out technology because of other issues. Now we're, we're bringing this in so that it, they're pretty much, you know, and they do use it for Chromebooks, for other things, so it's been also very successful. But because of, because of budget constraints, we had to reduce it from 25 to 15 something. But that has been very, very successful.
Gary, with these programs, how long do you think it'll be before we have standardized equipment throughout the district, rather than hodgepodge?
Actually-
Are we getting there?
When you, when you're talking about hodgepodge, what are you thinking about? So we're on the same hodgepodge?
I'm talking about old desktop computers.
Oh, you're talking about age, the old hodgepodge?
Yeah. And the different, different machines in different places, and-
We standardized years ago, I think eight-plus years ago, we standardized with Dell computers. So we don't buy Lenovo's or HPs or, we stick with Dells. However, because of our recycling program that we have, people get other computers, like HPs, because Salem Kaiser may, they may get rid of their, or not Salem, but Chomekina may get rid of their four-year-old stuff. Well, that, then we bring that in and replace our seven-year-old stuff, so-
But it's all like equipment?
It's all, yes, it's all, we, we have, what, my help this manager's done is he's, he's, he's made charts for principals, and he sends it out, and he says, "These items are red items, so they should be removed." Not recycled, but removed. These items are yellow items, which means they're getting close, you need to budget for replacement of those, and then the green ones are, I think it's like, we, we try to stay five years.
So standard, are we standardized right now?
Yes, they are standardized. Dell is our standard shop, we are a Dell shop, that's all we buy, Chromebooks, that's all we buy is Dell Chromebooks.
And everything else is gone?
Everything is going. It is called, it is still survival, we have to survive. But these new Chromebooks coming in, if you're not familiar with them, they're revolutionizing all of education, because they're in the 200-plus, you know, and they can get them, and these, and they come up instantly, and the kids can log in, and they've got their same profile information, no matter what machine they're on. And they've got great cards now, they can just put them in and charge them, and move them to the next room. So it is actually, it's really improved our whole district, and it is improving it.
We're relying heavily on the first aid testing business.
But each unit has a virtual workspace?
Yes, that's, that's how Google works.
With a Google account.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, that's great.
So it is slowly getting better and better, Andy has been a real proponent, proponent to bringing in this allocation amount, and that has really helped stabilize things and help principals purchase only technology on it, so.
So it's five years of red line, is that-
Five, five years is what we shoot for. Like I said, this, with this, we, I would like to bring the whole budget of technology into one, one pool, then you could actually resource it out better. The way it is till now, it's kind of contingent on a principal's discretion, you know, show me this or that, but we're slowly moving with this middle item here, we're slowly moving forward, so. When I'm gone, in a couple of years, it'll probably all fantastic.
So, and I might add that these days, with devices, it's almost getting towards, all your stuff lives in the cloud or on a server, so, at some point, hopefully, the device won't matter, you can just get on anything and get to your stuff, and that's our goal,
That is maintaining it.
Yeah, they, well, but then, then we take these donations, and, oh, okay, it doesn't work, we recycle it, we move on to the next one, in an ideal world.
Much more secure environment too, to do it that way than having, you know, an asset floating around, and a sense of information per se, and more on hand.
It's changing, Google has actually changed the face of education. Some school districts, believe it or not, they're moving their fiscal department over to Google. Because they're, it's in the cloud, it's always there, no, no, no cost, they can share documents among one another without anybody, without paper. So it's, it's actually, the education is getting really exciting for once, because it's affordable, it's becoming affordable, so.
So do some of the classrooms use tablets, or it's-
Yes, iPads are, are in the lower classes, and, uh, and we're doing a five-year technology plan, and part of that plan is going to, to kind of, uh, settle in what grades we really want to keep the Chromebooks in and the iPads in. That's been a mandate from Andy, that we look at that, and we are looking at that, so. iPads, they're really support-heavy, they take a lot of support, and so we're kind of, they do, they do. We have a person, Phil Kelly, that's the TOSA, he's overseeing the iPad, and, and he's always have, has to work on it, and, and when they break, like I had a headphone jack that broke, I have to replace the iPad. Nobody around here will do that, it's too cost prohibitive, so, so-
The Chromebooks are a great tool.
They, they are, they're just great, and so we're, you know, Apple's a great product for, for, we're fighting for kids, for lower kids, third grade and down like that, it's great, and for specialized departments like Glenn, the art department. So, you know, there's a place for them, but the Chromebooks really fills in, you know, the, the pie meat, you might say, it really fills it in, so. So, um, other areas here, there is really nothing else that jumps out that's different than last time here. I still spend very little money on Scan TV, I did bring in some money this time, so the person coming in has something to work with, um, but I have revenue coming in from DVD sales and events that we cover, so that, that helps subsidize equipment and things, so that's been a real, really a nice thing, so, and, and it's just, you know, that's about the only thing on here that I know that I've increased, um, so. Questions?
Any questions, or?
It's nice to see you in person, right?
I know, usually we're virtual, right? Who's going to do the, the, the virtual stuff?
Well, it'll all work out, the person you get will be probably three times better than me, and it's, they'll just, it'll flourish. Thank you, yeah, thank you also very much.
So Lauren Staley?
Hello, I'm Lauren Staley, we're new director of facilities, so.
Lauren is on the job literally just for a few weeks.
Yes.
And we do our first staff role here this evening, if there are any questions, but please take Lauren on board.
All right. We'll start out here with staffing, we do have a request for additional four-hour custodial, and that's basically due to the changes, uh, the new Silverton Middle School, additional square footage, and also the way that campus is laid out, it's going to be much more challenging to clean because it's spread out. So, that is one item, uh, and then, we also have a, a maintenance one person that we're asking to increase from 6.3 hours to eight hours. And that's basically also due to the current workload.
Or also decreasing, there's nothing between community roots now, correct?
Yeah, well, this was, and this was planned prior to community roots, so we might be able to take a look and see what we can do.
Their lineup's been removed, is that because of their impending?
No, we, we have not adjusted this as a result of that, at this point, I think that's what we're saying.
Correct, that's correct.
That could be a modification, uh, because we do provide, what does it tell in, is it maybe two hours a day or so to community roots? It's not a large chunk of time, but, yeah. And, and actually, Aaron, if you think it through, that space will continue to be used, it will continue to, it's a middle school, so it could be a wash when I was saying that.
Gotcha.
Okay. One other item that we, uh, increased a little bit, uh, under the 25-40 maintenance plant services, uh, is a line item that was put in there for emergency repairs. Current year was, was $40,000 was the line item, and we've already spent $56,000 in emergency repairs, so there's an increase to $50,000, a little more realistic amount there.
Well, Eugene Field going away, help there?
I can say hopefully.
We, you have to remember one building going and reviving another one that's still going, we're going to use them more.
But this is a red building.
So, it's been sitting for a long time, so. So we, we expect some, some potential issues with some of the equipment over there. Some of it's going to be new, but it will be equipment that has been there for some time. Uh, let's see, and then we have a few projects. At Bute Creek, we have a line item, uh, to do some window replacement in the north classroom building. Apparently those windows have been having problems with some water intrusion in their old windows, and, so. And, uh, under Central Howe, uh, there's a couple other projects here, we have some masonry concrete repair in the north gym, inside and out. Apparently there's some, some problems with that coming apart.
How is that gym doing, the wall? Been stable?
It, it is stabilized, uh, the last couple of times it's been checked, you're apparently aware, they put up some little crosshair things around the building, and then the last couple of times it was checked, it had not moved, and that's part of what we were holding off on this for, because with that movement, that's what kind of caused this problem that we're now patching up, now, now patching the issue from years ago.
So, and then we have a modular ramp there also that is in need of some significant repairs or replacements, can I check, this is for replacement?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then, of course, uh, we get down to Eugene Field, and we put, we've really reduced that to pretty much bare minimum, just so that we can keep the building operational until such time that it sells, um, so. At Evergreen, uh, there's some roof repair that needs to be done to the covered place structure, uh, apparently that roof is a nailed-on metal roof, and, uh, they've been having some leak issues with that, so those nails need to be removed and replaced with screws, neoprene gaskets, and some seam sealing also. So, Mark Twain Elementary, um, we have a line item here for minor upgrades for K-2 conversion, uh, and, and I'm not totally familiar with what those conversions are, but-
There are going to be some, some things that have to happen in there, for instance, a, a step basically, a ledge built in the bathroom for, under the urinals, because we can't lower them, uh, the way the building is built, and the kids are getting lower, and, and some of that, similar things like that, moving, moving some equipment, moving potentially some other drinking fountains, lowering them, some miscellaneous small projects, we, we haven't identified honestly exactly what all of this is, a little bit of a, of a wag at it, that we, we know we're going to have some things to do in there without a doubt, and we're putting our thumb on exactly what those are.
You may not even know until you actually meet them and go, we've got to move that.
And, and there's going to be some of that too, after September 8th or whatever.
So, most of the categories for electricity are decreased? Did we, we're not spending as much as we had anticipated, or almost, almost all of the volume?
It's, it's more on a prorated system, it's hard to tell, we have, we've had warmer, last year was definitely a warmer year, so it's really hard to project what those costs would be, and we also, uh, use our projections on what PGE tells us what the percentage increase is going to be, and they have two, uh, percentage increases actually, so, our fiscal year doesn't go with codes, coincide with theirs, so they may seven, they may say 7% this year, 5% this year. So basically, what we did, what we did this year, we just tried to go off of what we've used up to a certain point, and then prorated out for the, for the remainder of the year, so, um, just kind of going by that with a little bit of, uh, actually what PGE projected isn't always what it ends up being on all schools too, so it's very hard between weather and that to predict as to what it would be, so, trying to keep it at a more realistic as what it might, what we might think it would be, stability now.
Can I chime in just a little bit? Patty Jo, we've also, over the past number of years, uh, have added some, quite a few energy efficiency installations in this district, uh, efficient furnaces, uh, what's, what's the remote, uh, systems, um, monitoring that we do? We, everything, every classroom in the district is about from her computer for-
Well, there's handover controls that you can, you know, you have your virtual computer, you can look at and see what they're at, you can set, uh, days as to where, you know, if you know there's no school, then you can say, no, you know, no heater, no, no air conditioning for that day, or whatever, so, uh, so we're utilizing those controls as much as we can, so.
Lots of window replacements, just things that made a difference over time.
Yes, energy efficient things that we can reduce, so.
So do little kids at Mark Twain, they produce a lot more garbage than seventh and eighth graders did? Except the garbage is going up.
It's, well, it's, as I was saying, it was, though, everything you use utilities is prorated out, as to what we took from what Eugene Field used last year, prorated that to, all the way to, you know, um, basically to mid-June, you know, and kind of cut it back just a little bit, but yeah, they, they definitely seem like they have higher, yeah.
Additionally, does that, is, uh, Mark Twain will have three grades at it next year, and it currently has two?
Yes, that's true.
So there will be additional degrees there.
Okay. So we have another line item there for boiler analysis, uh, which is basically to try and look at the boiler, tune it up, um, get it running at, at peak efficiency. And there, the line item there at Mark Twain is to replace the wheelchair lift, which is beyond its usable life, and it sounds like it's really not functional at this point in time, so, that's essential, because it's the only way you can get to that upper, upper floor there.
The stage, it's in the stager, yeah, yeah, there's stairs otherwise, and so in order to get down to the gym level, you'd have to go outside if you didn't have it, so, and around, so, it's, it's imperative, you know, we need to have something there, so.
Yep, necessary for, uh, uh. Uh, let's see, Pratom, we have some, uh, some window replacement scheduled.
Hey, hang on, we don't have that everywhere, so, is that because we're doing the retrofit and some buildings required?
Uh, there's, there's currently one in place.
Yeah, we've had an elevator there for probably 20 years, and it's, like Lauren said, it's beyond its useful life, it's-
Since it's there already, we have to replace it.
We do, and, and, and from an access standpoint, we do have wheelchair, uh, students use Mark Twain in order for them to get down to the gym floor. You're right, we don't have it at Eugene Field, and we actually-
Or a lot of other schools, but I understand, because they're already-
For, for a similar circumstance, but, as an example, had we continued using Eugene Field, we would have installed an, an elevator at Eugene Field School, simply because it's, it was becoming a necessity with the, uh, from an access standpoint for many of our special needs cases.
Students that are there, okay.
So, you say like at Evergreen or Pratom, until we have a student that needs that, then we don't have to put them-
Well, there's some, there's some truth to that, but when you talk about, uh, being able to make your instructional space available at any point, so in other words, if, at Evergreen as an example, classrooms can be moved, uh, you can teach, if you had a wheelchair accessible student that could only get into a certain portion of, of the school, we would be obligated at that point to figure out a way to do it, and to teach that student in the accessible location. In a general assembly area like you have at a gymnasium at Mark Twain, where every student needs to access it, it's a little different story, yeah.
Okay. So, let's get, we have some, uh, window replacement scheduled for Pratom, uh, north wall and basement area, uh, due to leak problems with those, uh, windows, so. And then we move on to Robert Frost.
Let me, just on the Prat, there's the water testing, phase two, phase four, is that, um, just something that's done every few years? I know they had problems years ago, a few years ago, but-
That's, that's mandated testing, and, uh, I don't know if that's the, the three-year test?
Three-year, and is it, every three years, all the outlined in schools for the most part, if you like.
Everyone?
Yeah, everyone that has a problem, it's on three, oh, I see, yeah. Everyone except Scott Mills, I should say, it's on City Park, so, it's not going well.
Robert Frost, another boiler, uh, analysis slash tune-up to try and make sure we're operating at peak efficiency. Next, uh, item down here, Scott's Mills, uh, project that we have is to replace, uh, some thermostats that are in that building, and a lot of those, uh, my understanding, they're old dial thermostats, so-
And they're on the clock, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're on a time clock, but it's creating issues the way they're set up. Apparently there was a time clock added, and it's creating issues with their operation, and sometimes they're running when they're not supposed to be running, so this would allow us to tighten up the schedule, um, make it more energy efficient and more reliable.
These thermostats are accessible through wireless connection as well, so whether or not as in-depth as the control system, Helen mentioned earlier, they are accessible from the computer, anywhere, and for trouble shooting or adjustments, so.
And we have two out there already that are on- And we have two out there already that are on, that are on these type of thermostats and I access them from the computer and keep an eye on them or control them from there. And one of the main reasons why these were asked to be put in is because we have the furnace, when the furnace is running, heat, and then when the time clock says go off, it's, you've got a hot furnace that's turning off fan and off. You don't have a fan that's cooling that furnace back down, your heater chargers could get cracked because that heat's still staying within that furnace. It's just for, mainly for operation too, you know, the life of the furnace is being shortened by having time clocks on them.
So, it was budgeted last year but not done, is that what it, that's what it looks like on there?
Hmm, I don't see it.
Just the thermostat's the same amount?
Ooh, yeah, I'm missing it.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Yeah. It's just two lines below this year's budget for 2015, 16.
I don't, I don't see that on my copy.
Oh.
I'm missing it.
Maybe it's.
One of it could be Tiber. Because we never did put it in for last year that I know of, we didn't add it for last year, we didn't have the money to do it or try to, so we just.
That's what she's referring to, Lauren doesn't have that.
We had talked about this project a year ago to balance our budget, we put this one off, so I'm wondering if maybe it didn't get transposed somewhere in the process.
How quick do you think for a term we own this?
On those? I would bet you, it's hard to put a cost on it, it's damage, but if you figure, I'd bet three years.
It's pretty good, three years.
And we do, we do manipulate the time clocks quite a bit, you know, but the hard part of it is, is we get like really cold temperatures, you have to make sure you pull those pins, we're going to get way down to where it could, you know, cause damage if you don't have those running and if someone doesn't pull pins or doesn't stay on top of that, we usually do that, but it could, there's other potential things that can happen by not having a thermostat there. And it's nice to get on and be able to access and see, like, let's say you're watching ten o'clock news and you didn't realize it's going to be for the colder night, you can get on the computer, oh, okay.
That's nice, but seven thousand dollars, that's, it's a three-year payback.
Yeah, yeah. But it, it does do, right now in the cold weather, we do, as Salmons says, pull pins, it runs twenty-seven hours a day.
That's where you're going to have the gains.
Yeah, so you're going to have gains there because these are sets, you can say that if it gets below fifty-five degrees in the room at night, they come on no matter what.
Yep.
The other thing is the clocks that we have, the, the time clocks are mechanical time clock, so it's, it's going to run every Friday whether we have school Friday or not. And so, with these, if we're at a holiday or whatever, it is really easy to read, to program that holiday and, and all of a sudden it shuts back to fifty, fifty-five degrees for that day. So, they're, the savings add up pretty quickly to start holidays and weekends, so.
And it should, I'm, I'm guessing these have an override ability so you can tighten up the schedule and then if you have a staff member that's staying late, they can push a button and have heat for two hours and stuff, so.
Oh, yeah, they, they still can have access, yeah.
Lot of, lot of improvement as far as energy savings with those.
So, I think, just to clarify, Lauren, Joel might be looking at the version that was originally submitted to me and, and one thing that I did when I reviewed it and balanced it out was for the items that are special projects, so for example, a project that was done last year, like at Silver Crest for example, where it says carpet and lighting, ninety-four hundred and twenty-two forty and fifteen sixteen budget column, those lines had been removed since they were one-time items, but I wanted to balance back to the fourteen fifteen and fifteen sixteen budget column, so I had left them, left, put them back in there so it all, it all tied out, we could see the historical even though there wasn't a budget for it this year. So, specifically to Scott's Mills with the thermostats for the furnace on the one line item that's bolded, and then the, the line item, two items down called thermostats for seventy-two ninety and fifteen sixteen, it must have been in there last year, maybe it just wasn't done. And obviously these are referring to the same, the same project, but it is reflected in the sixteen seventeen budget, but I believe you're looking at a, a previous version, so.
Okay.
With everything going on in the transition, I, I must not have either been sent it or just got lost in translation, so.
Certainly not.
How it's happened with swashbait.
What's that?
Certainly not being done twice.
No.
Looks like you're planning on. Imagine in, in this particular budget with being so, so massive, there's a lot of, a lot going on and they're trying to reflect all the different projects in there, so, yeah, so we can go through a few iterations of it before it gets final.
We're seeing plain budgets here, we're not seeing actuals too, so that might be why you put it as a placeholder.
Right.
You may have had it in there last year, but it didn't expand.
It didn't now, exactly, yeah.
That's, that's fine.
Okay. So, another project is at Silver Crest, library exterior wall siding and window replacement. Apparently that siding and those windows are in pretty bad shape and need to be, need to be replaced in order to stop the water intrusion. Okay, and another project we have at Victor Point, which is repairs to the gym roof. Basically the same thing as, as the, the other gym roof, is it's a nailed-on metal, metal roofing, so basically it's sealing the seams and replacing the nails with some screws and the brick washers.
And that's the outside place structure at Victor Point?
It's the gym.
That's no roof on it, on the top?
Yes. And it's got, yeah, yeah.
Is it really? A flat roof?
It's not flat, it's, it's not sloped. Two twelve, somewhere in that country, that's sloped.
So, it's different than Central House here, the roof?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought they're exactly the same.
So, another item we have in here is for the, it's listed under Silverton Middle School, which you can see there's a, there's a budget for that. But roof patching in the nineteen thirty-eight portion, there's a section of that building that has, has been leaking for a bit and is causing some pretty significant damage. Even though we're not using that building, we need to get that, that roof repaired in order to prevent that continuing damage to where we get to a point where we have to block that area off, so.
Really? Why? Why do we care?
Yeah, I was wondering.
Well, at a certain point, I mean, it becomes, you know, unsafe for anybody to go in there.
Well, it's supposed to be right now, it's supposed to be locked, nobody in there.
It is, but there's, it's, it's a significant water leak, I mean, if, if you go in there, you see some rift tiles that are being detached and things like that, and I, I hear what you're saying.
Well, I, I have an example at Intel where we had a building where we decommissioned, just like this building, same issue, roof is starting to cave in and we chose to do nothing.
Just left it, huh?
Yep.
I could speak for the technology portion, we still run network equipment there, so our network goes through that building to the other half of the building that will be occupied by students.
There's a couple things that are going on there, I, believe me, I gulped at this one too when I started thinking about this. There's ceiling, there's fixtures falling off the ceiling.
Again, nobody's supposed to be in there.
The bigger, bigger issue to me is the, is the potential mold growth, building, this tiny building that now is full of kids, there's, there's going to be firewalls, there shouldn't be a lot of air infiltration, you shouldn't see that, but if you have a wet room next to a dry room, it's kind of hard to keep the two from joining, and it is in this end of the building where it will attach to the middle school portion.
It's a budding and active area, you're saying?
It's adjacent to an active area. It, it's, it's a pretty minor amount of money compared to what it would take to fix the roof house that, this is definitely a repair, a patch.
So, long-term, what is the plan?
Well, the last two plans have been to demolish that, that building and I think that would, it's fair to say is the long-term plan because all of our evaluation of that building is that it's cost prohibitive to remodel it as compared to demolish it and replace it. So, from my perspective is to, to remove it, but that's about a million dollar job, half of that being a basement alone, so it's not, it's very expensive.
And that project, the idea of demolishing that building is a million dollar job if you're rebuilding there.
If you're rebuilding.
If you're not rebuilding there, if you're just getting rid of it to make a vacant spot, that, that number's going to go up because all of the technology and the electricity for the entire campus are going through portions of that.
Power's a problem.
Yeah, through that thirty-eight portion, so if you were rebuilding a building, you would be doing new electrical service, you'd be doing new technology added, but if you're just tearing it down to have a vacant lot, it's going to be more than that because you're going to have to reestablish those services.
You've got ten thousand dollar placeholders, kind of, you think it could be less, I mean, obviously you're hoping it's less, but is that a fair, is that a fair estimate for that?
And it is, it's under Silverton Middle School, so I, I don't know if there are plans, because there are some roof leaks that need to be attended to in the area we are going to be occupying, so some of that money might be utilized to take care of those that there are several areas.
That part makes sense, it just bothers me where we're fixing a roof in a building broken.
Yeah. Well, the priority would be the area, of course, that we're going to be using and occupying, so. So, and then we get down to Silverton High School, we have a, a project on the lock and bar hot water tube boiler, and that I believe is the domestic hot water for the building, and that has been having problems and needs some significant work to do.
That, that unit's been in there since phase one and it's not really had too much needs and now it's starting to age, so it's needing some mechanical things done to it. And it does, the first thing that it serves is the kitchen, so we want to make sure that it's, when that goes down, it's a biggie, so we want to make sure that's taken care of, so.
When was phase one?
Ninety-seven, ninety.
Was it the?
Been a while.
Okay, so, I don't know if it's on yours, there's another line item for some makeup air units to, to be replaced.
Yeah, that's been, that's been removed because of mon-dollar purchases, yeah.
Okay. So, another line item is existing smoke detector replacement and that's in the phase one portion of the high school. There's been a lot of problems with those detectors and.
They get, if they age, they become less and less tolerable with anything, so they, they start, at the peak of anything, you get a fire alarm that goes off or, or continuous troubles, so, it's, it's, they recommend, actually we've had them for longer than what most places would still have them, we try to keep them cleaned out and things like that, but you can only, you know, electrical devices aren't the only last for, for your time.
And we have a couple other line items that are basically just for inspections, is my understanding, for the crane in the egg shop and the hoist in the auto shop, so.
So, those are inspections?
Yeah, it says.
It's not purchase, it's.
I thought, hey, did you get that?
No, no.
Same thing.
One of those.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, yeah, those are actually just for inspection, safety inspection, to make sure the equipment's in good shape and safe to use, so. So, I think that pretty much concludes as far as the projects, is, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Happy to be here.
Thanks. Thanks for coming back too, Joel.
No problem. Good to see you. I remember sitting there a couple of years ago and somebody else is budgeing in my.
All right, well, they have all this new people together. I'm Dana Peterson, I'm the new director of special services. So, I will throw out there, I've been on the job for about twelve weeks and I feel very fortunate to follow Linda Brown because she seems to be a master budgeteer, so I am happy to report that not much is changing for special ed. The first part for staffing, I do want to say that under the two thousand fifteen, sixteen years for the line item of behavior specialists, that is an error, we have never had three-point-five behavior specialists, that should be a two, and we will continue to have two behavior specialists full-time next year. Some other changes in personnel or staffing, we are going to increase the top-line item resource room with the new configuration and just the amount of students that have been qualifying for special ed services. And with the new middle school, including now sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we are going to increase our LRC teacher positions to help support all those students and their needs. We are also looking at, through this budget, there's a line item for the point-two-zero FT administrative oversight for nursing services, and those nursing services will now be held, I believe, by Mark Hannan up at Silver Crest, those are part of his new duties, and those services are for our nursing services, which we currently have two and a half full-time nurses, and those dollars we usually bill currently for Medicaid, we also run a Medicaid survey three times a year to help generate revenue for students who qualify for certain medical services that we provide at school.
Did Linda provide that oversight previously?
No, this is a new line item.
She did.
Oh, she did, it's all right.
She did, yeah.
It's all right, okay. You tell me.
Where are the nurses or how are they utilized?
Wow, we, we run them regent, I have to say. We have a point-five, for nursing services, she's full-time at the high school, but she does point-five nursing services, the other point-five, she is running our nursing.
Health occupation.
Health occupation program, correct. Then we have two other full-time nurses, one that's basically stationed in town at Robert Frost where we have a couple contained special ed classrooms and some severely disabled students or have conditions that need pretty much a nurse on-site at all times. Our other nurse is running around all the other buildings, thankfully, and also running our preventative programs like hearing and vision checks, so she helps set up with those, like the Lions Club, set up our checks that we routinely run every year for students. So, yes, I just had a nice conference with them and they are busy. So, it's, it's amazing how many students with needs that we have in this district for things such as seizure disorders, type-one diabetics, allergies, asthma, that all require health plans and a nurse to help facilitate those and, and manage those at least yearly, so.
That's been increasing over the years too.
That has, and I would have to say we're not the only district, I think every district is seeing that and it's, it's a lot of work. So, I, I feel very lucky we have, you know, the two and a half nurses we have that, that do those services for us are amazing, they know the kids well, they're part of our community, so I think we're very lucky to have them.
So, do the school secretaries still get trained in?
They do, so they do a lot of our medication management for us, bumps and bruises, especially, yeah, they'll call mom, they'll call mom if someone throws up, yeah, so they're, they're doing what I would think probably in older days is what the nurses used to do.
Right.
And now the nurses are, are really doing true sometimes trauma nursing, nursing services in our schools for our kids, so, a lot of work, they're, they're amazing. Let's see. Going down through the budget, there are no changes from last year to this year under restrictive programs, so that would be next on your list. Towards the bottom, the alternative education, there are no changes there, and I believe it's on the second page, psychological services remain the same. But there are some services under less restrictive, so that's back on the first page in that area. We, I have added some additional, a few hundred dollars for funds for travel for our LRC teachers, and those are teachers that are serving our smaller K buildings, so we have not quite enough to have a full-time LRC teacher. So we have not quite enough to have a full-time LRC teacher, particularly at any one of our K eight schools currently. They're running caseloads of between twenty-five and thirty kids. And so we share those. So right now, we currently have a teacher at, well, actually, we have some teachers that have three schools. So a teacher's at Central Hall. She's also at Bethany and Community Roots. And then we have a teacher that's at Pratom, Scotts Mills, and Evergreen. So just their travel and time and input with that. We also have additional funds for travel and supplies for, under the guidance and counseling area, for the same thing, our behavior specialists, for them to travel between all the buildings and service hall, all kids, K through twelve. We also have, so Steve might need to help with this. The health services, you're gonna see a very large amount of money under health services that was not there last year that's there this year, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. That is the money that we do pay for our nursing services. And you might be able to explain it in easier terms than I can.
Neither Dana or I were here when the fifteen, sixteen budget was built, but this is actually happening this year, the nursing services. But I believe what Linda had planned was she was, she was paying for those, the nursing services, with Medicaid carryover dollars, but it still really should have been reflected here. So, so this is really what is happening today and what is planned for next year. And while, and while we're talking about this, one, one particular note of interest on special services budget, if you go to page two, this is the one budget, department budget that reflects not just the general fund, but for example, if you look at the total sixteen, seventeen requests, it's just, just north of five million dollars. That's not how much is coming out of the general fund. When you continue below the five million dollar mark, you see all the funding sources that help pay for special education services that are all then reflected in Fund Two Hundred, Grants and Projects, IDEA, federal grant dollars, the Medicaid reimbursements, both for current year and also the carryover piece. So you see the carryovers reflected last year for Medicaid as well as this year, but that expense, that related expense was not included in the fifteen, sixteen expense column. So it looks like a greater variance in expenses than there really is. So then the last line item is the net, the net general fund expense for special ed after you take those other funding sources into account, so.
So what I'm hearing you say is it's pretty flat then? If I have a calculator, I mean, it's gotta be pretty...
For general fund.
Yeah, if you were to, if you were to include that, you'd be, you'd only be about forty or fifty thousand dollars different. That is general.
So along with the nursing services, I think the same thing happened if you look over under Service Director Student Support Services. There's a, under TyNet System, which is our special education computer system. Last year is zero. This year is twelve thousand dollars. So we've always paid that much money. I think Linda just did the same thing. She used some reserve instead of showing it on her budget. The other item that is new, if you go down to Instructional Staff Development, there's a line item for thirty thousand dollars and ten thousand dollars, and those are for teacher and special needs assistant sub-time. In the past, what has happened is individual buildings have paid for that themselves. Linda Myers helped me go through that. It was a little, I felt really bad about that. So for example, Eugene Field, over the last few years, has paid close to forty thousand dollars a year because they have hosted and housed some of our special needs programs for subs for teachers and aides. And so I feel like since the special ed budget with all of these revenues coming in, we could afford to help take the load off of one particular building and administrator that would have to foot that bill, which didn't seem very fair. And, you know, we want, we want our kids to be in the building. So realizing that, we look towards next year where Robert Frost will host three of our contained classrooms, which, with a lot of staff. So I'm trying to hold that as a place marker to help out that building in particular with sub-costs because that, that's a real downer. You have to save all your money for subs.
I think just chiming in real quick, this was actually a cost-saving measure in probably two thousand and eight or nine, is that we took, we used to have special ed fund, all the subs for the special needs district programs, but due to significant reductions, principals at the time all agreed to absorb the special education subs that they could handle it in the building as a cost-saving, and it saved tens of thousands of dollars. So this is, this is coming full circle.
Kind of returning the favor, yes. Does anyone have any questions? It's complicated, and I will continue to learn all about it. Thank you, Steve. Thank you. So I'm here to present the budget for some continued personnel issues in the Assistant Superintendent Budget as well as ELL. So if you turn to your District Support tab, go to the page that Linda Myers had already addressed, there's just a couple of things, additional items I need to point out for you. The first being that halfway through that salaries and associated payroll costs column, you'll notice that last year or for this, this year, we budgeted for an ELL program coordinator. And you'll notice that that's, there is not a line item in this budget for that, but it is contained in the ELL budget, which we'll go over here in a few minutes. The next item that I'd like to point out is that if you go down to Instructional Staff Development, the staff release time and extra time, we had increased that budget for this year and in hope that I would be able to offer an ESL endorsement class this year. I was not able to get enough teachers to participate in that, but I'm hopeful that we can continue some kind of professional development in a program area like that. And so I can, I asked for the same amount for this year. And the other piece I'm finding is that with our classified staff, we've been offering early release trainings on Mondays, and I've had a lot of licensed staff step up to the plate and do the prep work for those trainings, especially in positive behavior supports, dealing with conflict in areas where maybe they haven't been trained in playground duty, before school, after school. And so we are offering time cards for that, prep time for that. And then that budget is also to go to support staff if they're feeling like they really are educated in certain areas or there's additional trainings that they might need to be able to perform in their job. I was able to actually use some of that money to pay for the EAP this year. So that's kind of where I came up with the four thousand to cover the EAP. So we'll dedicate a line item for that for this coming year, and still were able to maintain the fifteen thousand in there. And then the cost flow of that teacher's tuition pool, that's a negotiated contract item. That doesn't change. That's within their bargaining agreement, so. Any questions with relation to those items that I'm in charge of? So if you go to the section, it's two, three, two pages. Away from that page I just covered, it's called Other Special Programs Budget Request General Operating Fund. The first item you'll see, it says Licensed Staff ESL. So this year, last two years, I've been in charge of the district ELL program. And you'll see that in the next section or the third item down, there is the point two, ELL homeless administrator, as well as the point one, program coordinator to assist with, you know, ELL migrant, homeless, any of those items. And so that's where that line item that came out of two pages ago, it got moved over to here. We did have Kristen Junk as program coordinator this, last year during the school year. She did a phenomenal job. I feel really good about our ELL program. I think that we have a desk audit that was just completed. We had one thing we have to tweak, stellar reviews. We have an onsite audit coming up in October, probably. And I feel very confident that the program is doing exactly what it's supposed to do, and we have a great relationship with ODE, so I'm, I have no worries about that. I also had Steve help me with the real numbers. I wanted to know exactly how much did every employee really cost me so that we could figure out where there might be some monies that I could include, things like mileage, because there hadn't been a mileage line item, there hadn't been a supply line item. And I knew that if we could really look at those numbers, we could take the money we already had and drill it down that way. So that's why you'll see that in the request, I've got some professional development time for our teachers as well as some mileage that we had not had in before. And we do share ELL teachers from one building to the next. I have one teacher that travels. Well, she'll be traveling from Scotts Mills to middle school next year. I have Kristen Junk, who travels from Robert Frost. She covers Central Hall and Pratom. And then we have a teacher that goes from Victor Point to Silvercrest. And we try to pair those kind of smaller FTE pairings with other title programs or part-time teachers who have the correct endorsements so that they can maximize our FTE. So it's pretty short and sweet. Any questions?
Steve, I guess you're up.
For Business Services, we really were status quo. The only item to point out is you'll see an increase of FTE from four point three to four point three five, basically adding...
Is there a tab for that, Steve? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. It's, it's part of the District Support. It's, yeah, it's, it's in the tab where Danny was just in with the...
It's the fourth page in under District Support.
Yeah, status quo, with the exception of an increase of point oh five FTE. We, that's two hours a week of one staff person. And actually, it dovetails a little bit with what Linda Myers was talking about with the receptions position and clerical support for the collaboration grant. We're actually, what we're planning there is to have some on here specifically for the front area, five hours a day, three hours of which will be paid for out of the collaboration grant, two hours from the, from the general fund. And this part of the, the increase is actually two hours a week. It's actually Shelley's position. Shelley is a point eight FTE right now and is paid for all out of Business Services, but about point three of her time goes to support the office as a whole, and only about point five of her time specifically for Business Services. And with the increase in workload in our department due to the Affordable Care Act, the new sick leave time law for sick, sick time for substitutes and that, that came, started this January, as well as a heavy dose of new grant dollars, which is exciting. Three seismic grants, all between one and one point five million dollars. Four hundred thousand dollar collaboration grant will be on the third year of that this year, as well as the Schleter Conversion Project. It's added a lot of extra, you know, transactions in the payroll world and the accounts payable world and tracking and that type of thing. So what that'll do also is free up that, that point three plus the extra two hours a week. So essentially, point three five, where Shelley will, her, her total time will be dedicated to fiscal services and not split basically between general office and fiscal services. So that's really the only, only change for us.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving right along with the Superintendent and Board, it's under, it's under District Support, first page. It says District Administrative Request at the top. The requests are very similar from, from two thousand fifteen to sixteen and seventeen. I do want to point out three areas that have an increase that I think is worth your discussion or at least awareness. First of all, there is about the same size increase with our LBL ESD student information systems at seventy-four thousand dollars from sixty-nine-three during current years. About the same increase that has occurred every year. We're keeping a close eye on that. The LBL ESD student information system is, it's the backbone of our, of our student information system, and it works very well. The same time, we want to be very attentive to those kind of price increases, especially if we see a pattern of that over time. There is competition out there, but this is just a powerful, powerful system. But, so we are essentially at, you know, at, at the, the expense that the LBL asks of us, we're really expected to pay that, so that's, that's the reality of the situation, but we are watching that. Legal services under twenty-three-ten, three eighty-two. We just live in a world that unfortunately is becoming more and more litigious, and our legal fees actually have to, have to go up. We've exceeded our legal fees for the last couple of years, so I think this will help make a difference. And of course, you know, any, any dollar that we put into legal support helps keep the risk as low as possible for this school district. And we have some pretty incredible attorney firms that, while the cost may seem expensive, I think the investment is worth every dime that we use for these folks. And then finally, the last one that I want to draw your attention to is twenty-three-ten, six fifty, the liability errors and omissions coverage. That, that did take a pretty significant jump here. That's less a reflection of us as a school district and more a reflection of the cooperative that we belong to called PACE. And so that kind of increase is really being distributed statewide. There have been some pretty significant liability hits, and as long as you're a member of that cooperative, which we are, then we all share in the expenses when it, when it comes to that. We haven't seen that significant of an increase from PACE in a number of years, and so I think there's a little bit of catch-up going on here too. Other than that, the other expenses remained relatively the same. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you see me. They're the one you're attention.
Andy, on PACE, is that cooperative, is that a statewide thing?
The majority of, unless they're self-insured, the majority of school districts in state organ are part of PACE or Special District Association of Oregon, two in the same.
Is that an acronym for something?
Yeah, PACE is Property and Casual...
Property and Casualty for Education.
For education.
And essentially, a lot of people think that property loss would burn fire. Some of these major casualties and the property have driven the rates up. But really, the last five to eight years, it's had a lot more to do with the liability side, as Andy mentioned in the legal fee part, just because of lawsuits and things. The rates increases are having more to do with that than even with the property, the misdamage.
So this isn't like general liability insurance. It's more professional liability.
Actually, this is the, yeah, this is, the liability part lives here, and the property part actually lives in the facilities maintenance budget.
Yeah, good clarification. Yeah.
Thank you.
Be back.
Are board members going to workshops and taking advantage of those?
We, we do have, board members attend the Board Conference, Annual Conference in Portland every year. There's also a summer conference, and we typically have one or two board members attending that. So, yeah, I think there's reasonable participation, and we also bring in trainers to the board, and so that covers it as well.
Yeah, they're so valuable. I just, yeah, anybody on the board. I learned so much whenever I would go to those conferences. I can't say how much they helped.
Absolutely.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Andy.
You bet. Yeah, well, and I'll say here, Jim, I think I'm next with the Superintendent Budget Message, so. That is next, correct? I don't have you standing in front of me.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'll, I'll move right into that. Each one of you should have a copy in front of you of, of my message. And I do take a few minutes every year and, and read through this, and I'll kind of hurry right through with being attentive to time because some of the things are, are also replicant to what you've heard from some of the presentations. But there's some very important messaging in, excuse me, very, very important messages within the Superintendent Budget Message itself that I think is important for you to hear and obviously for the public to hear via videotape. So I, I present to you the sixteen-seventeen Silver Falls Proposed Budget. It's the second year of a state K twelve funding of seven point four billion. We're currently in a forty-nine percent appropriation, and the proposed budget equates to fifty-one percent for year two. We're funded about sixty-six percent from state fund, twenty-seven percent from federal funds or from property tax revenue, excuse me, and seven percent from federal funds and grants. Talk a little bit here about predictable and unpredictable variables. The state school fund itself is really a, a pretty unpredictable source of revenue from year to year. It relies exclusively upon the stability of the state economy. However, our district funding estimates at this point in time do reflect some confidence, which I'm pleased to share. The budget is also reflective of a change in the poverty calculation, which you have heard about, the board has as well. The estimated revenue reduction to this district as a result of this change is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. However, what we've discovered, well, and it's also partially due to the decreasing level of student poverty in this district. We shared that at the last meeting, over the last four or five years, that's dropped about four or five percent, which is generally good news, that that does mean less revenue. So, but the other point, important point to note, and we really discovered this over the last few months, is that the district actually realized an increase in revenue two years ago as a result of the poverty calculation. two years ago as a result of the poverty calculation at the time, and the board and the Budget Committee at the time guarded these funds by increasing the reserves. It wasn't to the amount of $375,000, but it was guarded, meaning that the board asked that the reserves be increased that year, and so we did, and the budget was approved. So that, my point to that is that it helped offset the $375,000 hit. We were very concerned about that at the time, literally just a few months ago, but that hit has been minimized. Staffing levels in the school profiles this year reflect a reduction in federal Title I funding, even though it's not directly in the General Fund. It is something that does impact staffing across the district. It's about $100,000 reduction. And again, as a result of the decrease in poverty level in our district, we're seeing a decrease in, in funding. So as a result, there is an impact with some reduction in staffing levels, which I'll elaborate more on in just a moment. So while funding from year to year is unpredictable, we're fortunate to live and work in a school district where there are predictable and stable variables. They include 420 first-rate educators. They spend many of them their entire career here. We have incredible communities with a high level of support for education and their volunteer commitment. Many of these values are mirrored in, in the school district Strategic Visioning Plan, which each one of you has received a copy. This is a living document reflective of each school and community in the district. It defines who we are and it charts our direction as we move forward as a unified district. It's also central to decision-making, such as this budget. Other predictable variables include our collective bargaining agreements. We're in year two of three of both, and both, and funding sources such as the district Collaboration Grant and receipt of our third state seismic grant award. Those help, because they create predictability within a district where unpredictability is more common than it should be. This proposed budget is the fourth consecutive year where use of diminishing reserves is not required to fund school district operations, and many of you remember, just five and six years ago, but those were some pretty tough conversations to have. So I'm pleased to say that this budgeted fund balance is 7.8, and actually, it may be 7.9%, the highest in many years. So anticipating, and typically, the actual reserves is considerably higher than the budgeted reserves. As an example, last year, we budgeted about 6% for reserves. It equated to 11.9% in actual reserves when the audit was complete, so that's very good news. This proposal helps the district address the anticipated but unknown impact of the pers rate increases slated for the summer of '17. We'll know those rates this fall, but they won't be implemented until next summer. Our fund balance also helps address the aging facility needs of the district, something that we continue to have to address. So budgeting for a 6% or higher fund balance is a goal of the board. The other board goals included class size average maintenance and current levels of staffing as well, use of the Strategic Visioning Plan, and review of support options for vocational education opportunities at the middle and high school levels, which our middle and high school budgets continue to address. So I think that the next two pieces are very, very important for me to share with you. One of them is a snapshot for the year, and the other one is a snapshot of the last six years. So this budget reflects an overall staffing increase of 1.2%. It also reflects the following: estimated enrollment of 1% increase, which is typical; licensed staffing is a 1.2% increase; classified staffing is actually 1.5% decrease. That shouldn't be a surprise. We've talked a little bit about that, and a major portion of that is the result of the loss of Title I funding of that $100,000. And administrative staffing, 5.4% increase, and again, that shouldn't be a surprise to any of you, simply because we, we needed to increase administrative staffing in, in the district to support a number of needs. So let's take a look at the snapshot from the last six years. This is just as important. The enrollment the last six years has been a 9% increase in this district. Licensed staffing since 2010 to present is also a 9% increase. Classified staffing is actually a 17% increase. So we were actually close to 19% with current year, with a slight reduction, we're getting close to 17%. And administrative staffing has been zero until the proposed budget, so we now have a 5.4% increase. So you can see, and I think this is worth noting, is we prioritize our licensed and our classified staff add-backs, even though the reductions to administrative staff six and seven years ago were equivalent to classified and licensed staff. So we just hung on for as long as we could with the administrative staffing, but it's time, and we have 125 additional kids with full-day kindergarten and no additional administrative staffing. So you can understand where I'm concerned about us being able to meet the needs of this district. So this proposed budget includes our best efforts in improving instruction to meet the individual needs of students. It includes sufficient dollars to adequately fund Silverton Middle School, movement of our elementary students to Mark Twain, and closure of Eugene Field. It also protects a full-year calendar instruction. The budget advances our shift to more centralized budgeting in multiple areas, something that I've been driven with over the last few years. Curriculum, technology, nursing services, special ed, ELL, district-wide school resource officer, they're all part of that continued effort. They also support more uniform access to professional development. This year, we've put a special emphasis on classified professional development, which we haven't experienced in the last number of years, and I'm pleased that we're able to do that. They result in more uniform student access while at the same time preserving local priorities, which is something that this district has heightened as a priority over and over and over again, and I fully support. It aligns with community input, the values and goals described in our strategic plan. Additional conversation about uniformity of services, this is a very important point for me to make, across the district should occur while maintaining the important values identified at each site, and these are as examples: counseling services, mental health supports, opportunities in career and technical education, as well as the fine and applied arts, should be included in this conversation. Another important statement: however, an important priority for this district is our unique model of schools. We don't have cookie-cutter schools, which makes the efficiency in operations to provide the same services at each school a very interesting challenge. As a result, these challenges create some unique challenges to provide more uniformity for centralized support, and as far as I'm concerned, it's important for the conversation to continue. I just don't know what, what the outcome's going to be, because that's going to take some serious consideration by the board. So a new legislative session is slated for '17. It'll include the state budget for schools. It's my hope that Oregon's economy will continue to improve. If realized, improved and sustained funding will allow this district to fully meet the investment needs of each student, and I encourage each of you to encourage our legislators to do just that. I'm pleased that this district employs the finest educators around. They take seriously their responsibility of teaching to the individual learning needs of students. They know the value of our mission statement, plastered on our wall right behind you, and their efforts make the difference, and I believe this budget will adequately support their ability to do so. I present it to you fully and recommend its approval.
Can we go back and review and approve the minutes now?
Yeah.
Since we have a full form and you have... Ron?
Yep.
Any, was there any correction or to the minutes from last time? Okay. Okay, motion to approve minutes? This was ready?
Second.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So minutes are approved. And audience with visitors? Okay. Move right along. So review of the proposed budget discussion. Any discussion items on the proposed budget?
I was just gonna make a quick mention if I could, just with regards to the format. It's similar, but a little different. I think the number of pages are about half as much. One thing I did do is once you get into fund by fund, instead of seeing all the revenue for each fund and then the expenses for each fund later, the complete profile for each fund, exception of the General Fund, it's two pages, but is on one page. So Page Eight, for example, which is Fund 200 Grants and Projects, you'll see, the state likes to use resources and requirements rather than revenue and expenditure. We could use either, but I labeled it resources and requirements. So you'll see the resources, then the requirements. You'll actually see what the audited income balances were in each of those funds for the previous two years' actual. So I think, hopefully, it helps a little bit visually with capturing the complete profile of that specific fund, so I just wanted to kind of point out the difference.
Any other comments?
I do have one question I was thinking about. Are we getting inquiries to students from all night schools to attend the middle school?
Not out of, nothing out of the ordinary. We generally have more students transfer to our rural schools than come in, and I can only relate to my experience at Mark Twain. Sometimes that would reach kind of a 50/50 piece. We'd have a number of rural students that would come in because they wanted the middle school experience, so nothing out of the ordinary, though. We anticipate that enrollment to be between 430 and 450 students next year, which is what we budgeted for.
Any other discussion? Okay, we got an action item there to approve, approval of the post-school budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017. Anybody, is there, there's a motion?
Yeah, you have, you have actually have choices. Again, have A or B, depending upon what you, as a Budget Committee member, choose to do.
Entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Budget Committee of the Silver Falls School District approve the 2016, 2017 fiscal year budget of $63,611,740, and set next year's tax levy rate at the permanent rate of 4.5458 per thousand dollars of assessed value, and approve a tax levy of $3,694,950 for the purpose of retiring bonded debt of the district.
Second? I guess this is a budget, another Budget Committee member? I guess that's the board, too, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. And say nothing else here on the buses? Are there any other things? If not, we adjourn.
Thank you very much, everyone, for your commitment and for the budget approval process. It's been very, very helpful. Thank you, Tim, for coming in.
You didn't all want to come back another night? I do have to run and go back out.
Sure.
Oh, man.
Tim's neatness.
When I got that text from Ron, I thought, oh, crap.
One more down.
I think the 80-degree weather and lots of things going on has something to do with Here, you all can leave your notebooks here, and Shelley will take care of those. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.